So I'm going to open the meeting, a select board, November 3rd, 2022, at 6:32 PM. And I'd like to ask the town administrator to read just the executive session agenda items, please.
Good evening. Now that the session has been opened, the board can vote to go into the following executive session items. Item number one is pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A, 6 and 7. And that is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property where the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. And to obtain legal advice pursuant to Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444 parentheses 2007, which is the lease of the Sherburne Community Center. Item number two is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board and town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of five-star building corp versus the town of Sherburne pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter 30A, section 21A, 3 and 7. And Suffolk versus D.CAM, Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass, 444 parentheses 2007, the library.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have any suggested modifications or comments on the agenda, executive session only? If not, I think we need to vote to approve the agenda, then we'll vote to go to executive session. So do I have a motion to approve the executive session agenda?
Move to approve.
And second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And I do, as chair, declare that we do need to discuss these two items that were read in executive session. So I need a second and a roll call. I move that we move to executive session now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I am I as well. So we're gonna pause. And we're now opening the open session portion of the Sherburne Select Board meeting on November 3rd, 2022 at 7:55 PM. And so I'd like to ask the town administrator to read the open session agenda, please.
Good evening. So after I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda as written. There was a public comment section tonight. There is a couple of public service announcements, one by John Douss, and another one by Jeff Waldron, who's going to have a few words to say on behalf of the Fire Chief staff board. The first item is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant for the interim town administrator. The draft minutes of September 22nd. And our next meeting dates are November 17th, December 1st, and December 15th. The second item is a presentation in consideration of venting into an agreement with the Metro West Regional Transit Authority for the Dial-A-Ride program. Rob Wolf, Sue Kelleher, and Diane Moza here for that discussion. Item number three is a consideration of venting into leasing with the Sherburne Community Center that's on the agenda as a placeholder. We have review of the draft select board meeting calendar from January 2023 through the end of June 2023. And a review of the town meeting timeline and a possible vote. Item number six is a consideration of routine business, and that is the select board reports. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. I have one revision to the agenda that will eliminate item three on the agenda because we're still making revisions to the community center lease, so that will not be covered tonight. Do I have any other proposed changes to the agenda?
Not, not a change, but a concern of the
Okay.
The issue regarding the Metro West Regional Transit Authority?
Yes.
The proposed motion is already the voted position of the town. I've been on record at least twice voting for that motion years ago. The risk of putting the same things on the agenda that have already been voted is, I hate to see the board go somewhere else.
Yeah, yes.
So I'm, I'm concerned that we had, why, why, why do we need to have this when we already have this, we already issued this authority?
Well, let me ask a clarifying question. By, at the time we issued the authority, we didn't know the details. So now I think we're getting a presentation tonight, and we have the gentleman here from the MWRTA. There are somewhat more specifics. You know, we, we have the authority to enter into an agreement, but this is now, I believe, if I'm not misstating, a more closely defined agreement. Is there any benefit to? You know, we have the authority.
I think we, A, we already have the authority, B.
Yes.
My can, again, my concern is that we get lost in those details and maybe have a different result, which I think would be not a
I don't think that's likely. So, so right now, we're just amending your, the agenda. Do you want to change? Do you have specific recommendations for how you would change the agenda? Or do you, or you'd be comfortable just making the motion, let you make the motion when we get to item two?
And Paul, do you have the, the language of what we voted on before? Does anyone have this when you actually look at it?
I, I, I don't. I don't. Sorry about that. But I know I'm on record twice voting for this. And it was unanimous with the board. This, this is like a, a no, to me, it was a no-brainer at the time. The problem was the MBTA wouldn't do it. We worked with a, a different guy, Ed Carr, I think was the
Yeah, John is the one, John's Featherstone.
He retired a couple of years ago now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so it only has the word consideration here, Paul. It doesn't say, but my reaction is, why don't you make the motion when we get to that agenda item and you can make it how you feel is appropriate?
And Paul, you're probably the only person who was on the board when it was voted, so it's muted the rest of the four of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, the rest of, the rest of the four of us don't know exactly what that
What was voted on in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just because something was voted in the past doesn't mean we shouldn't have a say today.
Yeah.
Was it specifically about the Dial-A-Ride program or a general agreement or whatever? We'll find out. Yeah.
Yeah, this just says consideration, which is also a, a, you know, somewhat conditional clause, so.
In person, I'd like to see the presentation.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, no, we definitely want to do that. That's not a question. So, um, are you comfortable or do you want to make a, a language change to the agenda, Paul?
If you want, we're just, the item, if I think things are going south, I might.
Okay.
I just don't want to see this, this longstanding, it's been a longstanding policy of the town.
Yeah. I, I think you're, I think we'll be okay, but let's, let's handle it. Let's leave the agenda and handle the discussion appropriately. I concur. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read with the, my change of eliminating item three?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul? You can abstain if you want, Paul. Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So before we get to the agenda, we're gonna have two public comments and John Douss, if you're still hanging in there with us, I don't see him though. Is he here, Diane? I don't see John.
Diane, you're muted.
Uh, we did talk yesterday, and he knew he was coming today. I wondered.
Yeah, but we told him to come at seven.
Right.
So, um, what John Douss, you probably, anybody that's been by Town Hall this week can see that we're, they're promoting Tri Valley uh, open houses this weekend, and we want to make sure that potential students in Sherburne are aware of the opportunities that Tri Valley Regional School offers. So John was gonna, John's a representative to the school, and he's an alum also. So that's what he was gonna talk about, highlighting their open house, which I think is this Saturday. And if he joins, if we, if he joins Subs, so we can weave him in, but he was gonna talk about that a little bit and talk a little bit about an issue that we'll face next year, which is their capital plan, because they're gonna have to make a significant capital investment in sort of, the school really hasn't been upgraded since the 19, late 1960s or whenever it was first constructed. So that'll be an agenda item that we will handle in the future. The second public comment is from Zach Ward, who now has mandatory ALS training tonight, state mandated training, so he can't come. So I just want to recognize Zach and the entire fire department. They had the open house, you probably saw on Sunday for, it was for Halloween for the kids, their open house, but it's really a tremendous community engagement event. And it's really a benefit to the whole town. And I just want to give you a few quick bullet points. They had over 400 and almost 500 attendees at the event. I actually went at 11:30 and couldn't get anywhere near the place. I came back in the middle of Patriots game. It's a little easier. They had 31 fire department members who were not paid for their time there. They had 31 fire department members participate in the event, totaling 250 hours of volunteer time that they gave to, to host the event. It spent months of planning. They gave away a lot of, you know, glow sticks and lessons, the demonstrations to all the children that showed up. There's children climbing in out of the brush, brush truck and the ladder tuck. Um, they had participation. They had, you probably saw the two Red Sox trophies were there. I have a photo I could share with anyone that wants it afterwards. They had the life flight helicopter land in the afternoon, and Framingham Fire Department brought their safety trailer here that people could examine also. So it was really a huge, huge success, and I just want to thank Zach and his team for, for doing it. Anyway, do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And so I'm not sure, Rob, are you the one that's gonna sort of get us kicked off on the Dial-A-Ride program? Who's gonna do that?
Yes, Rob is gonna stop the, I believe, the presentation.
Okay.
Can't hear you, Rob.
He's not muted, though.
No, I know.
I think he's just not talking yet.
Oh. Rob is the town's representative to the MWR, MWRTA. He's a the town's designated, appointed representative.
Can you hear us, Rob? We can't hear you. No, we're not hearing you yet.
Sorry, I'm using a different
Can't hear you, Rob.
We still can't. We can hear you very faintly.
It's closer to the microphone.
Yeah, he took the mic off, I think.
Using some fancy mic. You can go low-tech like
Fire ears up quickly. Now, I, I don't have the presentation.
Rob, I can pull up the presentation if you like. Oh, no, I don't have the new one.
We can hear you now a little bit, Rob, now that you took the microphone off.
Maybe we could have Sue pull up the presentation. Sue, can you do that?
Um, yeah, I, let me go into my email.
Because you made some edits, and you, Sue, you made some last-minute changes, I think.
Yeah, Rob has them. Let me just see what I can pull up here.
Jeff, why don't you try going to a different agenda item and let Rob get a chance to catch up?
Good idea.
Yeah. That's a good suggestion. What do we have that we could do quickly?
Meeting calendar?
Yeah, why don't we go do that, Rob, and you, you get organized, and we'll come back to you in a couple of minutes, so.
John, thanks for being patient with us.
Yeah.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
So
Can you just tell them that I'm rebooting my machine, the presentation's on my machine, so I have to
We can, we can hear you, Rob. We can hear you now.
I, I'll mute you now, and I'm gonna mute you for the time being, Rob. When you're ready, just wave your hand or something. So the item four is review of the draft select board meeting agenda through June. Does everyone have that? Or have any changes they propose to it? It looked fine to me.
Fine.
All right. Do we need to, I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we've got it. If there's changes in the future, Diane, don't you agree?
Yes, I can always bring it back if there needs to be a change.
And I like the town, I like the town meeting timeline is really good. It's got the advisory hearing and all the other dates.
Yes, that one has to be reviewed, too.
Do we want to walk through that? Does anyone, does everyone have that?
I think that's a good idea if we do that. I know Jackie's here, I think, to talk about that, too, especially with that town meeting day.
Do you want to go through it, Jackie? Because it's also the warrant closing date and that kind of thing.
Sure. Um, so the reason that we wanted to talk about the town meeting, hopefully, if you guys saw the fact sheet that I gave to Diane, is that we have an issue with the second night at Lindquist Commons. So unfortunately, so we, we are definitely booked for one night on Tuesday, the 25th of April. Uh, but we need to have a backup night, and hopefully Mary can do her magic. And with 33 articles that we had last year, we were able to make it with one night. Hopefully, it won't be as complicated as this year. We'll have less articles, but we still need a backup. So the middle school choral room only holds 100 people, which I tentatively reserve for Wednesday night, but I don't think that's gonna work. So the only other night, um, that we would be able to get in because of the school musical is Thursday, May 4th, or unless you guys wanted me to pursue going to, um, like Pine Hill for the second, trying to book Pine Hill for the second night. But hopefully, we won't, we won't need it.
Yeah, hopefully, we won't need it also, because if we went to May 4th, we would have to delay if we have the election, which has voting on capital items or something, wouldn't we have to?
No, because the, the questions are still due to me 35 days before
Okay.
the election, so it doesn't matter. Many times, the questions, you know, are invalid
Okay.
because, you know, certain things didn't pass at town meeting, but they still have to be on the ballot. So it's 35 days. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
One of Pine Hill involves a lot of extra setup, so if we could stay in the same location for the second, for a second night, if we needed, it would be great.
Yeah, but the thing is, it would be, um, you know, 10 days later, or eight days later, whatever it is.
Also good. Right.
I thought you also had an option for doing Lindquist Commons on Wednesday, that in-between day.
I, I thought I did, but then when I tried to book it, they told me that they have a dress rehearsal that night.
Yeah, that's
get in. So that's why they wanted to book the, I mean, normally, it is never that week. They were very apologetic. There's been turnover in that office, and they didn't hold the week, the week for us.
Yeah.
Now they know that they
Well, we, we typically haven't gone to a second night recently, I don't think. Mary Wolf, do you want to opine on anything here? As our moderator?
Yes, I would, actually. Um, I, I don't, I, in one sense, I don't have, have a care one way or the other, except that if, I'm concerned that if we have to go to the next week, that we might have trouble getting a quorum. Because the quorum is back to 100 this year.
Yeah.
And, you know, people move on. So that would be my concern about moving it to the second week.
Well, we, if we went to the middle school, we would only be able to have 100, but we could do that. What did you, would that be done the second night? Would that be done on Wednesday night if we went to the middle school, Jackie?
Yes, yes, it'd be Wednesday night.
So I don't know if that's a fire department issue or not, because if they limit it to 100, and we have to have 100.
Yeah.
Now Well, they, they said approximately, I asked her how many people can fit in there. She said approximately 100.
The bigger problem, I think, Mary, is what if 160 show up? You know, we can't turn people away.
Sure. But I mean, even, you know, if the, if the fire department did limit it to 100, you've got to start turning people, you know, I mean
It's a smaller, it's a smaller, I've been in there many times, as you have too. It's a smaller room by far.
Right.
I mean, I think it's really
That's my concern about the second, going to the second week, is that it'll be hard to rally the troops.
Well, then the only other option the same week would be Pine Hill, probably, it sounds like. But that's kind of a rigmarole to go to a new venue, and we've had to get buses before and parking and all that kind of crazy stuff.
Parking is a lot better there now.
Yeah, that's a good point, George. I didn't think of that. That's a very good point, as is vehicle flow.
And we had to get buses because it was like 900 people at that town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna make up a chance that's not gonna be like that for the second night of this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we even had to have two rooms for all the overflow, the babysitting. That was the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
bullshit thing, so, yeah.
Wednesday at Pine Hill, it sounds like it's where we're heading. I'm, I'm good with that.
I am.
Everything will be fresh.
I think it makes the most sense, just because we would be having problems if we got more than 100 in the middle school. And I agree with, I would agree with Mary if you went out a week or so.
Okay, so can I, can I ask them about Wednesday or Thursday? Because I, I need to reach out to them and, and ask
Because we usually do Tuesday and Thursday, so we could, I think the only reason we weren't doing Thursday was because
Thursday wasn't available.
Yeah, yeah.
Wasn't available.
Yeah, use your, use your judgment, and if you, you know, we're meeting in two weeks, but if you need an answer sooner, we'll schedule an emergency meeting for one item if we have to.
Can I, can I suggest the preference be Thursday? Because that's been the tradition, and that's what voters would be expecting. And the fallback be Wednesday?
Okay. Do you guys just want to vote on that? And then I can, I can even email you guys and let you know what the situation was?
That's a good idea. I think that, let's give you the authority to, to book it, book Pine Hill for Thursday night. And if it's not available, book it for Wednesday night. And if neither's available, then we may have to reconvene.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask another, sorry, not to come.
Vote, yeah.
Another question.
Yeah.
We're gonna be doing it on Thursday night at Pine Hill. And if Tuesday night's available at Pine Hill, would it be easier to just set it up at Pine Hill for both meetings now that the parking situation's better there?
I don't know. But the problem is, is that if they need the auditorium or gym or whatever for the kids, um, I guess
Oh, in between, you'd have to take it down anyway, right?
You'd have to take it down. But I can, I can double-check.
Not a bad idea.
Jeff, Mary has her hand up.
Yeah, I, my electronic hand isn't working for some reason, so.
That's all right.
But, um, yeah, the, as far sort of, I, my preference would be to have it on Tuesday night at the region, because we have all the electronics and everything set up there.
Yeah.
Paul, who did it last year, did a great job. Um, you know, it, it's, it's really well done there, so.
Yeah, I think that's true.
I just didn't know if it was easier to have it in one location. Whatever's easier, we should stick to.
I mean, the hope is that we're not gonna go to two nights.
Right.
I mean, if we have to, I, I would hold people there till midnight to, you know, as long as you can keep a quorum, just to get it done in one night, but, yeah.
Is, is an idea, uh, that we start a little bit earlier, half an hour earlier. So rather than starting we, when we issue the warrant, instead of saying 7 o'clock, we say 6:30 or something like that?
It's fine with me.
It works.
Be safer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So, I, your hands up. Do you want us to vote now, Jackie?
No, well, I have a question, because if we, I just want to have a comment. If we do do a second night at Pine Hill, is that going to be an expense for, um, the sound system and all the other stuff?
There will be, yeah. I mean, like Mary said
I don't have a budget for that now.
Well, we'll have to do a reserve fund transfer, I think we have to do. I mean, we can't, if we, if we go, if we start at 6:30 and she holds us there till midnight, if we haven't covered it, we have to go through the whole warrant. We'll know in a month and a so from now how big the warrant's looking, so.
Okay, because, because that, that, if I, I'm gonna have to reserve, um, video and sound people. I mean, I can talk, when I talk to Pine Hill, I can find out if anything's available, but I can't book that at, at the last minute. That's the problem.
Let's see, we, we don't even know if the venue's open at Pine Hill either. So why don't we, why don't we figure that out?
Okay.
And, you know, we'll have time to, to figure out
Figure it out, okay.
Diane?
I'll bring this back to the, uh, December 1st, select one, uh, the January, uh, I'm sorry, November 17th, select board meeting, and then we can vote the final calendar at that night.
Does that make sense?
Better dates.
Do you want to vote tonight, Jackie, or do you, okay with it? You explored, and we vote in two weeks?
I'm fine with that.
Is that right?
It's okay. Yeah, because you're telling me what to, you're telling
Yeah, we're giving you direction, and then we can confirm what with, based on what you find out.
Okay, no problem. That's good.
Good suggestion, Diane. Thank you.
And I'd just like to make one comment that I've made at every discussion about town meetings over the last two and a half years. I'd like to permanently reduce the quorum.
Well, we can consider that next, in two weeks also, if you want.
Absolutely.
You have to notify people you realize N days ahead. I forget what, how many it is, but before you're going to vote on reducing the quorum, just so you were aware.
Okay.
I'm looking to, like, where is it? If it's, I'm looking to permanently reduce, like, if it's in the town bylaws or wherever it is, I'm not, I'm not even sure.
I can, I can, I can look into that. I can look into that.
It's in the town bylaw. I should have to amend the bylaws.
Yep. So take a town meeting vote to reduce it.
Yeah.
All right, Marion has her hand, then Sean.
All right, just a, a note here. There's a, a chat from Jeannie saying she thinks the warrant is gonna be considerably shorter. Um, my, my, which is good, my comment is, uh, looking at the, uh, the calendar, which is a really useful calendar on the, the build-up to town meeting. I noticed that the warrant closes on January 10th, uh, which is fine. Uh, boards and committees usually, you know, pay attention to that calendar. What we often have are kind of last-minute citizen petitions. And I remember we discussed last year, perhaps finding a way to get out the word to the general citizenry that if they plan to do a petition, they should come to the select board or some relevant board very early on, well before the deadline. And I'm wondering if there's a way to get that word out fairly early this year.
I think we could, Diane, we could put this on the website if we wanted, just, once we have the calendar, where that we could put a notice to citizens that anyone having, considering a citizen's petition for the warrant, it needs to be in by, you know, we're saying we want to close the warrant on January 10th, so they'd have to get it in really right after New Year's.
Right, and we'll put this on the website, right on the front page of the website.
Yeah.
And, and we should also tell them to bring their, uh, their petition idea to a board or committee.
Yeah.
Before we've said to the select board, which I think is a good idea, uh, early on, and we might say, you know, before mid-September, you know, notify the town office, uh, by early, mid-September, if you are planning a citizen petition.
Not September, right?
September, mid-December, you mean, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll put some wording together, and then we'll, we'll pass it on to you, Mary, if you want to take a quick look at it.
Uh, sure, and Jeannie has her hand up, too. She probably has
I did, real quick, at the bottom of the timetable, and we had this last year, it did say, um, they should be submitted to the select board's office as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Just, and if, the timeline will be placed on the, the front page of the website under a free form. It'll say town meeting information, and this will be on there. So, and I'll do it, I'll do an e-alert at the same time, so everybody who's signed up for them will get that.
That's, I didn't even read that footnote. Very, that's great, Jeannie. Thank you for doing that. That's perfect.
Welcome.
Sean, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm not gonna stall much, because now I see Rob Wolf's almost ready. But I was gonna point out, if not a second night, why not plan a third? I don't think there's a legal requirement to have a second night. So the best way to prevent a second night is don't plan it.
Oh, yeah.
It, it's been, it's been quite a while since we even used a second night, and we probably shouldn't have. So I, I don't know that we need to put much thought into it. The garage is al- always open for the second night, standing room only.
Yeah, but we had to rent the equipment for that too. But anyway, all right. Yeah, yeah, that's true. All right, good point, good point. So I think we've covered that, uh, so really, um, we're back to MWR TA. Are you, uh, geared up now, Rob?
I hope so. Can you hear me now?
Here, here you find.
Great, thanks. Sorry for the confusion.
No worries.
Okay, so, um, there's a nice presentation, uh, much of this information came from Sue Calher and it's based on. Current usage, um, as, you know, administered by the COA. Um, and we had, uh, I had visited the MWR A, RTA several months ago and gotten sort of a. A briefing from them on the, the various services available. And then they came and gave a great presentation to us at, at the COA office. And, um, so we just wanted to, um, present some of this data and, um, let you see what's happening there, so, uh. I can share?
Absolutely.
Full screen, I guess.
I'm not seeing it yet. There you go.
Okay, so. There's, um. There's very limited options right now, um, there's issues with wheelchair transportation. Um, you know, certainly Sue can go on in much more detail about what she is looking for in terms of her current needs. They do work with JFK Transportation and, uh, we subsidize the costs. And we do local area and medical rides to Boston. Um, and, uh. Sue may can chime in anytime. I, I've heard that JFK actually, you know, does a quite good job for, they're very accommodating. Um, we've got the information on the costs here, so. We arrive to in the local area, ends up costing the individual six dollars one way. And the COA covers the remainder of the cost, which is, you know, uh, somewhat reasonable amount. Um, approximately thirty-six dollars, looks like. And medical trips are considerably more expensive, both for the town and for the rider. They, uh. They have some challenges and one of which is they don't always have wheelchair availability, or, or wheelchair transport availability. So, um, here's some information about, uh, some grants we had that helped with the service during COVID. Um, and those have either expired or have been, been used up. So, um, the MW RTA folks met with us and. Uh, we kind of went through the different things. They have scheduled route service and they have this, uh, point-to-point service. And, um, there is, um, there is ADA service which they have to offer. In connection with their scheduled route services, but, um, that's. There's just something here where we can get to one place in town apparently, and I, I don't really know the detail on that, but it's not very generally useful. So what they've suggested is the dial-a-ride service, which is used in a number of communities around here and. Uh, I believe this is all latest information from the. The website and from the material they gave us, but, um. Uh, John Featherstone, who I see is listening in, is the MW RTA person, and he can correct me if I get any of this information wrong. Um, but it is a. Address-to-address service, reservation service. It's available to. Uh, individuals who are sixty-five or over or disabled individuals of any age. And it's, uh, currently available in the towns listed, including our neighbors in Ashland. Sudbury, a couple of other towns a little farther away. Um, and it serves addresses in the origin towns. It serves. Um, also addresses in the destination towns of. All our neighboring, you know, towns we're interested in, you know, Natick, Crimingham and others, and including Sherburne is currently a destination town. So it's not currently available to Sherburne residents, but it's available for an Ashland resident to come to Sherburne, for example. Um, there's also some extended areas, uh, which are only useful for. Uh, going to medical appointments or hospitals, and they're not useful for going to other random addresses. Here is basically how the system works. You have to sign up and it would be administered through the COA, but it's, you know, it's the MW. RTA you're signing up with and you open an account with them. Rides are supposed to be reserved forty-eight business hours in advance and. The MW RTA vans are all equipped to handle wheelchairs. Rides in the local area, those sixteen towns I mentioned are, uh, a two-dollar fare. Though I believe there's, they're still waiving the fares because of, they were waiving them during COVID and then they're putting in a new fare structure, but. Uh, we should assume by the time we start this, the, there will be fares to the riders. And, um, slightly higher fares to the extended areas. Um, now the service is actually considerably more expensive than that and the user's town is assessed for the rest of the ride cost. But up to one hundred percent of the town's MBTA assessment can be used to pay. The, the costs. The, um. Nope, I missed a slide. So we pay approximately thirty thousand dollars a year in our assessment. And, you know, we haven't received a direct, a direct benefit for that. Of course, we have the benefit of being adjacent to. A community with some commuter rail stops. Um, so we can use that money to, to fund this basically. Um, the assessments are quite expensive. It, it, the number I, uh, we, most recent number we got is it averages like eighty-five dollars. Per ride, the local area rides, which, you know, um. The, the guess we've gotten from the MBTA person is we could, we could handle at least three hundred rides. Um, I assume that's in a fiscal year. Without going beyond what we can cover from the MBTA assessment without any extra cost to the town. Here's some information from Sue on the number of rides that she's run through the COA program. And you can see we've only gone through a little bit over three hundred once.
Does, does ride mean a round trip?
Um, yes.
Okay. Well, when you, when you got the estimate of three hundred total in the funding, were you talking round trips or single rides?
No, it's, um, I'm sorry, it's not round trip, the, it's two ways, so that's three hundred was the total of the. To and from. And that's how they did it for the MW RTA, would be a total of the three hundred to and from.
Yeah, okay, so it, it would amount to a hundred and fifty round trips.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so the, um, the dial-a-ride, um, yeah, I'm not sure about that business hours thing because I believe you can actually make reservations. You can go into the reservation system, you know, on the weekend and make a reservation, but, um, it's. It's available Monday through Friday, six thirty AM to six thirty PM. Um, however, um, you can also limit your hours. If you want to do a trial and you're concerned about, you know, how much of a. Finding out how much ridership you're gonna get, you could sign up to say, let's do two days a week, let's do three days a week, let's. You know, and month to month, you could decide to turn it up or turn it down. I also know there's one community, I believe it's Sudbury. Who mostly does their own ride service with a van owned by the town and operated by the town. But that service terminates sometime in the afternoon and then they just have dial-a-ride coverage for. Um, a few more hours. So, um, if the town does, you know, sign up for it, um, they can. We should be able to man, uh, monitor how much. Our assessment would be and how many rides have happened on a month-by-month basis. And we can make a decision as to what to do if it looks like we're gonna run over this amount. But, you know, you do, the town has to completely cover the additional costs if we do run over the amount. So, um, the, uh. MW RTA was, would like to sort of work through the COA and they would, um. They would publicize it within the town and I believe they would go through the COA. Uh, people would go through the COA to sign up for it. And, um. So, um. Uh, we don't have anything about this here, but I, as I said, I believe Sue's plans are also to still retain a relationship with JFK and be able to use those for things like. Uh, if there's a group event and you have a group of six people going somewhere. It's much more practical to, you know, just rent a van to come and take you all instead of having six people make dial-a-ride reservations and such. So it would still be some use of, uh, the JFK program. Um, so, you know, the, the, we're really, um. There's a, the medical component, as I said, is only applicable to the extended area. Within the local area. You know, you, people can use this for whatever they want, so, um, it, some people use it for shopping. Um, and so forth. Um, so, um, I know, um, Sue, uh, can speak about this if she wishes, but I know she's quite enthusiastic about getting this. Uh, we spoke about it on the planning board and the planning board, uh, supported and I believe, um. We, uh, uh, select board should have received the letter from Gino about that. Um, so, um, I guess we're, um. We're here to ans- answer any questions. Um, I would like to just, you know, put in a little bit of a cautious note that. You know, as I said, it's a, it's a substantial financial amount per ride and, um. If, uh, you know, if, if there's like five-day-a-week service. It, something amounting to only a one round trip per day would basically run through this money and. Um, have some burden on the town before that, so. Um, you know, I, we're giving this information to the select board. We need, uh, you folks to make a decision on it, but. You know, one thing to potentially consider is, um. We'll certainly treat it as a, as a trial period for it. But we could also consider, um, going in for less than five days a week to start. And see how many people want to use it and what kind of usage, how much we think it's gonna scale up.
Also, I would just, um, I'm, I fully support this. I think that people that can't drive. Um, lose a lot of their independence and giving them another option, we still have the JFK option, so people could choose whether they wanted to use JFK. Or, um, dial-a-ride, if they needed to, you know, go to an appointment in Dedham, they would still use the JFK option. And honestly, we had a grant for ten thousand dollars and it didn't, it, not all the money got used. It, people are still a little hesitant about, you know, trying transportation on their own. But, um, I know a lot of people are very limited and it's very isolating if you can't, if you don't have a car. In Sherborne, and I think offering this service would just be beneficial to, um, those sixty-five and over and disabled and. You know, if, you know, if by chance we go over and have more rides, then we have a bigger problem. Then that we need to address, so we will monitor it and I honestly don't think we're gonna go over the three hundred rides.
I would argue that if we actually go over three hundred, it don't have a problem. Actually, we have something good, but. Um, would this require an appropriation? Anyone know? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in. Sorry, Marion.
Oh, no, it's okay. Go ahead, Eric, finish.
I mean, is this enough money that, I mean, we actually require some kind of appropriation? Is it something we can, uh, what is, what is the total financial obligation for this?
I can answer that if you'd like. On your cherry sheet assessment every year, in this, this year in fiscal twenty-three, you get thirty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Assessed to you for public transportation. That money can either go right back to, uh, my words, the MBTA black hole. And you guys derive no benefit of that thirty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollar assessment. Or you can take this assessment, use it to provide this opportunity for transportation in Sherborne. My professional opinion, uh, with the MW RTA, you're not going to exceed this budget. And Sue and I can dial it up and back and forward to make sure that you don't. But if you don't take this money, that money just goes back to the MTA and doesn't benefit any resident in Sherborne because you have no MBTA. Service in Sherborne, so essentially, and nothing's free, of course, you have thirty thousand dollars to provide this as a, as a. Value-added option to your residents, or it just goes back to the MBTA and nobody gets any residence, so. We can make it work for your assessment and make sure that you don't go over your assessment, so out of pocket for a board of selectmen. You're adding value to your community and it's not costing you a penny.
And it's thirty grand we would have spent anyway, if I understand that one, yeah.
Well, no, it's thirty grand that you're not utilizing. You're essentially not even utilizing it, just going back to the T. And if you don't use all thirty thousand of it, let's hypothetically say you use twenty-eight thousand, two thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars will still go back to the T. But you get no T service in Sherborne now. You have no T service, so this is an opportunity for you to capitalize this money. And put it to good use for your community.
Yep. Rob, you can probably, uh, stop sharing now.
Okay.
So, um, that's a good point, John. Thanks for bringing that up. So, um, I have a question, uh, for Sue. Is there a risk you think that, um, JFK Transportation will? No longer want to offer a service to us if we're doing the dial-a-ride, that they won't be available?
No.
You think they have enough capacity?
They have a good volume and some people, to be honest, will call, you know, they have a two-day, uh, window. And sometimes they can't accommodate because they're so busy, so we don't have, um, sign contract with them either. We just do it as a, you know, as needed basis, so.
Okay.
And we, and we, we use JFK ourselves even. Uh, and in the sixteen communities that we represent, JFK is in a majority of those communities as well, even with our service of dial-a-ride.
Okay, so, um, Marion, you had your hand raised first, I think, then Rob.
All right, I, this is really a no-brainer. Uh, the, the question is, uh, exactly. How, how it's managed for, for an individual who wants to use it. It seems six business days is. It, it is quite a long time in advance.
Not six.
Two, two days.
Two, two days.
Yeah, two days if you're not disabled. If you're disabled, it's twenty-four hours.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's reasonable. So, uh, yeah, it sounds like these reservations will go through the COA. Is that correct, Sue?
No, we, um, take the application and approve people and John will teach me how to train people, um. To access the system.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think it, it sounds, uh, it sounds great. There's no reason not to use it, provides. Uh, a wheelchair accessibility as well, so that's.
Yeah, and plus, I mean, you know, the, uh, you know, just for an example, last year, you know, we had a woman that had MS that. She couldn't be picked up at her house. She would have to go to, um, uh, Sherborne, uh, what is it, the Sunshine Dairy to get her.
Yeah.
Husband, you know, because she was eligible for the disability and the medical, but her husband didn't want to just leave her at Sunshine Dairy to wait for the. Ride, so this really is a door-to-door service, just like JFK. And they have a call center and they also can keep an eye on, you know, if they, somebody calls and then all of a sudden they show up, nobody's there, they'll call the COA and. And alert us. So it's another set of eyes on people as well.
Great. Rob?
Oh, yeah.
Just has, you want to clarify something? Go ahead, Rob.
Just uh just a couple of things. I just wanted to clarify something with uh John. Um that I had asked before. I don't think I got an answer to, which is my assumption is is that. These finances all work on a fiscal year basis, so that if our our fiscal year twenty-three. Is a little bit more than thirty thousand dollars we're paying in, then if we were to start this, you know, December first or something, we would. Have thirty thousand dollars to spend between then and uh June thirtieth on rides. And um then a new fiscal year starts. Is that uh correct?
It's complicated, Rob, but you're you're close. This is a cherry sheet assessment. So. Uh and not, and I I say this respectfully, not everybody understands what a cherry sheet is, but it's cherry sheet. Assessment is that you're assessed this by the Mass Department of Revenue. They're giving you that money. Okay, that's part of your cherry sheet assessment, just just like your chapter seventy, just like your mosquito management. Uh your M A P C stuff. So I mean, the the state is giving you that money. If you don't use that money, it goes back to the T. It just go automatically, it sits there in the books. You're not, the town of Sherborne is not going to see a bill. And when I use the word bill, I'm using in air quotes, because we just handled the assessment. If if it's thirty thousand dollars. We just take that thirty thousand dollars and then we send eight hundred and fourteen dollars to the T. You won't see your first bill. For this for a year and a half, because we're always billing you in the rears on this, which even gives Sue more control over this program. Because if we see that we're exceeding what your budget is, we can dial it back. But I I think some, I think Eric made the comment also though, too, is if you guys are actually exceeding this, that means you have a bigger need in your community than than you're aware of today. So that's an opportunity as well, too. So. When you say that we're charging you, we're not charging you, you're taking advantage of essentially.
You you're not answering the question, John.
Haven't been taken care. I'm sorry.
I I asked a quite simple question, actually, and I wasn't asking about yet. I'm saying, you know, we have essentially. You've gone over it, a thirty thousand dollar credit for fiscal year twenty-three. I assume that that is, it doesn't matter to me when you end up getting your money from the state, but I assume that basically means that. We can. Use up to thirty thousand dollars and if we start the service next month, we can use up to thirty thousand dollars worth of rides. Between then and June thirtieth.
Correct.
And then July first, we're starting to basically use. The the thirty-one thousand dollars of our fiscal year twenty-four assessment.
Hundred percent correct.
Okay, so it's just, I just wanted to make sure that everything happens on a fiscal year basis. That's all.
Yep.
Yep, and um. Okay, so you know, I think the thing, the select board, you know, it's basically been presented as the most straightforward thing to do. Is to not ask for an allocation and basically say. Um we're sort of coming into this halfway through the fiscal year. So, you know, even if eventually when people sign up and get used to it and start using it a lot. Even if, you know, two years from now, we're using more rides, you know, we're extremely unlikely to use. To go over this amount in the what remains in the current fiscal year. Um but in fact, we can um. You know, we can't always. Restrict the service more on a month-by-month basis if we need to. So um I guess we're looking for some, you know. Some direction from the board as to whether they want us to just jump in with both feet and do five days a week, or whether we want to. Uh try something more limited first.
Well, Paul, Paul had some, uh let's let the select board talk now, or Robert, if you don't want. Paul, you had your hand up first.
Yes, I I want to repeat what I had said at the beginning of this meeting, that um it's already the stated policy of the town. Voted at least twice. To. Implement this kind of program. I'd point out that this should be a formal agreement. I haven't seen that agreement. Agreement's not before us, so I. I can't make a motion to enter into an agreement because I don't, I'd like to see the agreement, but I. We already have authority to do this and we had worked with uh Ed Carr. Uh with the MWRTA before to try and get this. And ran at the problems with the MBTA and the State Department of Revenue. I hope. This works. And I would not put any restrictions on that because there are no restrictions and the authorizations that were already voted. So. To me, it's a no-brainer to do this program. To. See what happens. If it turns out. A year or two from now that there's a problem. We can dial it back, but why would we want to dial it back? I think our fundamental duty is to take care of the needs of the residents of the town. If there's that kind of need with disabled people and with with senior citizens, we ought to meet it. This is a good way of doing it because it gives us. A thirty thousand dollar boost. So the first thirty thousand is free. Right now, we're paying for the service on our own. Entirely. So I don't, I don't have the budget numbers, the amount that's actually spent on transportation for JFK. But that money would be available. Also, to back this up. Before we had, would have to go to town meeting, increase any budget or all that kind of stuff. So we do have that safety net. And as Rob has pointed out, the the year is already half gone. So it's likely. That we could do pretty well in. This year. So I don't see that there's a financial. Local town issue. At least for fiscal year twenty-three. So why not do it?
Go ahead, Sue.
Um it'll also um take a little bit to get people to understand how to use it and take advantage of it. So just like it did with the, when we had the grant, it takes. Oh, it takes a learning curve. So I don't think people are going to be coming out of the woodwork to uh, you know, use it right away. It's just going to be a matter of. Learning the system and feeling comfortable with it.
And can I piggyback on that, Sue? W- w- one of the things that I do in sixteen communities throughout Metro West is I work with COAs on a daily basis. And part of it is about community outreach. And what you're going to get when you get into this service is you're going to get. Sue and I are going to work a lot hand in hand with each other on this, so she's always going to know where you're at and what we're doing. But more importantly. If Sue needs me to do multiple outreach events for COA type events, or if we need to do things at town hall. Or if you need me to attend a town meeting so we can sell this service, a lot of times in communities, I'll do PSAs on the local cable channels. So we can do stuff like that. Well, we'll, we also reach out to the local media. Training is essential on this because once people understand what the what they're getting and the value that it's added. People s- seem to use this more than other forms of transportation. And also keep it in mind that you don't want to exceed your budget as well, too. But based on comparable communities throughout the Metro West area that have dial a ride. You're not going to exceed it, but you are going to add value to the community.
I think so. George?
Yeah, I just think, I I don't think it hurts. I I disagree with Paul, like he may have done something twenty years ago. Uh but I think we can make a motion that we should enter an agreement that we have in our packet with the MWRTA. And I think we should be doing five days a week. I think it's a great service. It's something that is going to be good for our community. So I would make the motion that the town entered an agreement with MWRTA. Provide dial a ride services to those residents that meet the criteria and have the MWRTA facilitate transfer funds from the MBTA to provide this program.
There was a proposed agreement in the in the packet?
There's no, we're going to enter, Paul, like we do with everything, the select board then now goes into negotiations on an agreement. I'm saying we're making a motion that we're going to go into an agreement with them, not approve the agreement, Paul. We do this all the time. I don't know why you have to be.
I I thought I missed it.
I made a motion. I made a motion.
So before we get a second, Erica, his hand raised.
Yeah, just um, well, maybe it's moved now, but I was curious if uh what Paul had approved before was specific to this dial a ride. Because I think there's a few options at MWRTA, to be honest with you, so. But if that, if it doesn't matter, we're looking, moving forward and become, maybe perhaps it's moot anyway. I also think this is actually good for MWRTA as well. John, do these buses and vans, they come out of the uh Blendon Ave facility in Framingham?
Yes, sir. Everything is out of Blendon Avenue.
So Sherwin's closer than almost Framingham, where they're right inside of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh in ma- in many cases, yes. In many cases, yes.
Yeah. And also, no brainer. Oh, you know, I guess the only question I have is do we go right to five days a week? And I don't have a good sense on that. Up I go wherever the majority of the board goes on this one. But do we do a ramp right up to five days a week? And we start something uh tapered when people people start to learn about it. That's like, I think, left up debate for me.
Well, I'm gonna actually make an exception. Second, George is uh, George has made a motion and I'm going to be the one to second it right now. And he proposed that we go with five days and I. Strongly support that because then you're going to have confusion, then you're going to, you know, six months later, so now we're going to five days from two days. Just just offer it because we don't know when their doctors.
Yeah, what days?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was going to say the same thing, like, let's make it more complicated.
No, let's just, yeah, let's just go with the whole service and then we'll see what the demand is. Who knows, you know? Shopping may be more weekends and doctors more weekday. I don't know, but. I I I second George's motion um as moved and it's a motion to enter into an agreement, but we don't have the agreement to then authorize the details once we have that, so.
Yeah.
We have a motion. Go ahead, Paul.
If I, I he slightly modified the motion in response to a question from me where he said to enter into. Negotiations t- towards an agreement.
Okay.
And.
That's that's fine, Paul. That's fine.
I'm gonna vote for.
Okay, so so I think we have a motion in a second. Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you, John, for joining us and for your ongoing support that we won't know about, but we'll appreciate. And Rob and uh Sue, thank you very much for helping facilitate this because I know a lot of people are going to really benefit from it.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Forward to.
Yep, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay. So um the only item we have left on the agenda is select board reports. I was going to mention uh sort of a. Two-part one and then um see if there's any other ones. Um I'm proposing, and Paul, you can help me with what we have done in the past. I think we should issue a press release for the hiring of chair money. Is that what you've typically done to announce, you know, a new uh town administrator?
Great idea.
Yeah, so we're, we'll probably uh not release it now, but he's starting the twenty-eighth of November, uh which is the Monday after Thanksgiving. So I'm thinking maybe we could release it Thanksgiving week before that, because the. Local newspapers tend to come out on a Thursday. I'm not sure what they do Thanksgiving week if they come out on a Wednesday, but.
Maybe we do it at the WikiStitch, Jeff. Maybe like. That week after Thanksgiving and he's there, and then if people want to talk to him, he's already there.
That makes sense, and it's not like a holiday week when they not getting their papers anyway, probably. So that's a good idea, George. So uh that's what we're planning to do. Uh Diane and I are meeting every Friday uh morning to come up with uh things we want to get him up to speed on right away. Um so we're working on that. So if people have ideas of things that they want. Uh let me know. What I will probably do is um develop a list in conjunction with Diane. Maybe we can share it two weeks from tonight. You know, so you can look at it and maybe prompt your thinking uh to to add.
One quick thing, I think probably the first thing he's going to jump on is the budget, just based on.
Yeah, that I I'm very careful to, I want to make sure we don't uh overload him also. I want him to focus on uh. Uh getting to know the staff uh and particularly police, fire, DPW, who are direct reports and. Not get involved in a lot of other things in town until those are under, and you say it's the start of our budget cycle, so. I'm conscious that we don't want to turn the fire hose on. We want to at least give him uh a focus, I think.
Could, can I make a suggestion, Jeff?
Yes.
So some months ago, you very nicely put together goals and objectives for the town.
Yes.
And that sort of set out sort of the big picture of what we wanted to see.
Yes.
Happen in the town.
Yep.
Uh I think he needs to see that, so, but we never formally adopted it.
It's on my list. Th- there's some months ago, though, Paul, we're thirty-six months ago, I think, but yes.
Thirty-six?
I believe so.
I passed it. Having fun.
As I recall, those were goals and objectives for the select board. Uh our work uh.
Well, then he's sort of uh implements a lot of our work.
Yeah, he's he's our implementing agent. So I I'm wondering if you could.
Yes.
I don't impose on you because I know how busy you are. Um but if you could kind of update that, bring it back and. Have us take a look at it and give it to him so he at least knows what the board thinks is is the direction the town is going in.
Yes, that's, I, that was already on my list and actually the top of my list. The second thing you'll be interested to know is that I want an org chart for the town of all employees. Not like all the fire department volunteers, but I'd like to have an org chart and part of his. Uh first ninety days is to get to know particularly all the department heads and things. So I think that could cause the org chart to be developed, and I think we should have an org chart, so. I was actually looking, I forget which town, I think it's Millis, has their org chart on their website. With the names of department heads. So we can decide what we want to do. I'm not saying we have to do that, but I think we need an org chart for the town, too, that shows um, you know, who who everyone is.
This is a predictable comment from me, but uh Jeremy Marsh, Marsh said you'd have a copy of the master plan.
Master plan and and I still don't have my copy because I don't know why I didn't get the advisory and open space and recreation, I would say also.
And the open space and recreation.
Yeah, both both of us. Yes, I completely agree, Marion. Diane?
Marion, I just want you to know, I placed it on his desk yesterday.
Oh, all right.
So he has it.
I was there today and you didn't tell me, though. Was I, was I there today? I think, was I there today? I don't even remember. The days are flying through. All right, that's all I have. Are there other, any other select board reports? By the way, the library is working on a December um ribbon cutting. It's not.
Heard December eighteenth. My kids.
Yes, yeah, yes. Probably be today, but we're uh, we're working on it. So um and the carpet is supposed to come this week and it hadn't come as of yesterday, so I don't know if it came today.
Um I've got something.
Good.
Uh yeah, uh as you know, uh the two, the two fortyBs on Washington Street in Greenwood came before the planning board uh last night. Fortunately, I couldn't be there, but uh I have a question really for Diane and Jeannie, if she's still here. Yes, she is. Uh we don't yet have a site visit. Uh comments are already starting to come in on both of those. Uh Jeff and I are going to be putting together two comment letters to uh to mass housing. I assume the second one will go to mass housing. But it's a kind of a different, it's not strictly a fortyB development. So uh Diane or Jeannie or.
We haven't been notified yet, Marion, of any site visit. I think that they're a little bogged down on their end.
Oh, so it it would be the developer that organizes the site visit with.
It's um, it's it's when housing development is a genie that um it's not age.
It's uh DHCD. It's the, it's not mass housing. It's C, DHCD, I think.
That's what I was looking for, DHCD.
So so the the Greenwood uh Lane houses are mass housing.
Yes.
We, uh the other development is not mass housing, so.
Correct.
Uh you know, we have some questions to ask of mass housing and DHCD as to how. They're going to handle that because you want to make sure the letters go in two places and we've been asked, for example. Are they to be considered one development or two separate developments? And how do we address that in our letters, et cetera? So we just need some clarification on that. address that in our letters, et cetera? So we just need some clarification on that.
I think, I'm telling Marion, I think they're considered two separate developments.
I think they are two.
Yeah, I think they are two.
And of course, there are no guardrails around what we say in our letters to either one, but we'll definitely need two separate letters going to do, do different.
Yeah. Now that I know, I thought maybe we could merge them, but now I know it's two separate entities reviewing it. We probably can't do that. And we already had the walkthrough. I was out of town, but they had the Greenwood walkthrough already. So, and we've got a lot of comment letters. I mean, there's obviously way less comments on a four, four house project on Greenwood.
But we will be getting more comment letters. We probably have to send another letter out to boards and committees asking specifically for comments.
On the, on the, on the, on the apartment complex, the, the Washington. We did get a, a very extensive of Butters comment, you probably saw today.
Yeah. The question is, we usually wait until we know when the site visit is.
Yes.
But we don't hear about a site visit. So it would be good to find out. And I'm not sure who should do this. If they plan to have a site visit, maybe they don't. I'm not sure. So Jeannie, can you do that with their consultant, which I assume is still Lynn Sweet and not off it?
I'll contact Lynn tomorrow.
That would be great. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jeannie. All right. Unless there's any other select board reports, does someone want to move that we turn on Thursday Night Football?
I'm wondering if the Eagles are way ahead. That's.
I know way ahead and you have to have.
Not that I would know this during a meeting, but they were seven to seven.
Oh, okay. Wow.
I watch Phillies baseball.
No, they're not on till Sunday, I think. I forget Saturday.
They're on now.
Are they? I thought they, I thought it was delayed till Sunday. But anyway, yeah, you have to have Amazon to watch Thursday Night Football now. All right. Well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Some move. Second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Good meeting.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.